I'd like to call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, could you please tell the role?
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yeah.
Mr. Fudgie?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
And Mr. Schneider is not able to be with us today.
Item six, superintendent's report.
Thank you. I do want to share just quickly before we jump into our two reports there under 6.3. There was some news that came out last week about some changes with gatherings and dancing. And so, Mr. Jadus has message to the students. We are looking to move forward with the prom. Depending on the site, we need to work through some of those logistics. So if you can kind of bear with us for a little bit as we make sure that we're able to, looks like potentially have dancing with masks on, but we want to make sure that the venue we're looking at, that that's an option. So, more to come on that. I know there's been some impatience and excitement about that. We certainly understand that. But when they first announced it, the health departments weren't even quite sure as to what that meant. So we are working through that. Excited about our kids having that opportunity, whatever it ends up looking like. Graduation, I know you also sent out some information, but we will be moving forward with that on May 22nd, which is Saturday, with our normal time of 7:30. We do ask that families hold the 23rd as a rain date. Typically, we set up the inside of our gym and have that as a backup for rain, and that is not an option right now. So just kind of holding that weekend. We're hoping we can do it Saturday night as planned, but want to keep Sundays an option. So two, two things that have kind of come out of some local announcements at the state level lately that we're excited to move forward with for our seniors and celebrate them this spring. All right, with that, I will move into, we have Mr. Shelton, our high school athletic director. If you want to come on up and introduce your guests and board yours.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have Phil Nichols with me here. He's from the NCAA organization. I'll say NCAA today, it stands for North Coast Athletic Association. It's not the actual NCAA college, something like that. So yesterday, I shared with you a potential draft of a license agreement between Big Walnut Local Schools Board of Education and NCAA. Basically, the summary of that, NCAA has agreed to partner with us to put turf on our current high school football and track stadium. That would be to replace the current grass field and add turf to that field, which will be a middle school down the road. But for the next upcoming fall, it'll still be a high school. I just want to take a minute here, prepare the short agenda. I'm just going to quickly talk about the benefits to Big Walnut Athletics and our students. And Phil's going to come up and talk about his organization. And then I'll come back at the very end here and talk about potential timeline. If we were fortunate that the board would approve this within the next week or so. The first thing is, most importantly, and I just, I'm cutting Joe and Jill this morning to talk about it, but just looking at field maintenance. If you're an AD, trying to keep grass growing in Ohio, trying to keep water on it, fertilization, mud, fixing sprinkler heads, it's a never-ending problem, to be honest with you. So being able to put turf on there and just alleviate that problem completely is a huge benefit, obviously, for me as an AD. It's also a cost savings. Talking with Jeremy, trying to put a number on that savings is kind of hard to determine because some of the man-hours will be reallocated and things like that. But there definitely will be a cost savings to the district. Won't have to water the field. We put a lot of money into just keeping the sprinklers working. And I can imagine the water costs. I come up all summer long, make sure that that water's turned on, make sure that grass is green, make sure that those fields are safe for our kids to play on. So just that, having that flexibility there of not having to worry about field maintenance, for me, is a huge plus. And then for Joe, with being a middle school down the road, what a benefit to him that would be. Field flexibility, just thinking about winter weather. You know, I just know what the other schools have in the area of central Ohio here. Having access to turf really gives you the opportunity to play year-round. Other than this winter, when we had six strict weeks of crazy temperatures and snow on the ground. But in Columbus here, it's not always like that. You can typically play on turf. If you're a soccer parent, you can play on turf when it's 20 degrees outside. I mean, I've been on those fields and I'm sure some plays as well. You can play year-round on soccer. Soccer on that turf field, really even football and lacrosse type of sports as well. Having that flexibility is something we haven't had. Once the snow hits and the cold weather hits, those fields become just a muddy mess and you really have to shut them down for the winter so they can be playable for the next year. Just the growth of youth sports in our community. I mean, obviously, we continue to grow as a district. I'm just seeing the growth of our youth teams. This is an opportunity for all of our youth kids to have, you know, play on a turf field at a young age. It's a good benefit for what we may have offered until this point. So I'll turn it over to Phil.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, everyone. Great to be here this morning. We're excited to present this opportunity to the Big Walnut Local Schools. Just some background on us. Northern Columbus Athletic Association is an all-volunteer 501(c)(3) that was founded, believe it or not, back in 1966. And has been operating pretty much continuously since that point in various forms and fashions over the years. We previously owned a 50-acre parcel of property just north of Morse Road on Route 3. Soccer parents probably played there at some point along the way with their kids or watched their kids play there. But for our organization and our size, at some point, it just became too much, as Brian has already alluded to, to try and maintain 50 acres of field space. Was quite a challenge and quite a big cost to us. But we were fortunate in 2017 to reach an agreement with the city of Columbus to sell them that property. And we closed that transaction in the middle, in June of 2017. Then, as an organization, we were trying to plan, all right, how do we sort of move forward and thrive for another 50 years? And, you know, began looking around at communities in this sort of northern quadrant of Columbus and southern Delaware County and, you know, noticed the incredible population growth that was heading in this direction. And decided that we should focus our attention on bringing some additional youth support opportunities to this part of the region. You may ask, why are we trying to partner with Big Walnut Local Schools? And again, one, because of the area. Two, we've been looking, as I said, we sold the property in 2017. We've been searching for a parcel up here to develop, to put a few fields on since that point and have run into a number of hurdles, primarily related to the lack of road infrastructure and the cost associated with bringing the roads up to the level that would satisfy the local municipalities for a facility. So when we found out that you were building a new high school and we're going to have a, you know, an old high school still in operation, but as a middle, you know, fifth and sixth grade middle school, we decided, well, let's reach out to the school district and see if there's some way we can partner, maybe redevelop or repurpose the old high school facility into more of a youth-oriented, you know, play area for non-school sports as well as school sports. And we reached out to Brian and other members of the administration, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback. And originally, I think our discussions focused more on doing something at the new location, but we all coalesced on the idea that the old high school was the route to go. And of course, as you can understand, having a turf facility for a youth sports program with the younger kids is a, you know, a great selling point for them. It's great for the parents, you're not worrying about the mud and the rain outs and all those other factors that mess with your weekend schedules on, you know, on the grass field. And then finally, the benefits of the partnership from our perspective are when we don't have to use a significant portion of our limited resources for the infrastructure, for the parking and for those facilities, we can invest fully into the field. And thus, you know, we're able to provide the same quality of field, same quality of turf on that middle school field that you'll have at the high school. So there'll be a seamless transition from middle school to high school and I think a great experience for the younger kids to dream, you know, who dream about playing high school sports at some point in their careers. Brian's already talked a little bit about reducing maintenance costs with turf. And, you know, we'll be able to work with that and keep the annual cost to maintain the field at a level that is reasonable for everyone, year-round opportunities. And, you know, we've also had some really preliminary discussions about the possibilities of bringing some other improvements to that, that the existing high school site. Possibly a second field and some other exciting improvements down the road that I think would make this a long-range, long-term partnership that would be beneficial to everyone. Again, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Senator. I'm just circling back there. Phil talked about, a little bit about the quality of turf that would be installed. The timing of this, it's almost like when I first heard about this, it's almost crazy impeccable because obviously, we're putting turf at the new high school. We've been able to partner with AstroTurf, their company that we vetted through the new design process of the new high school. We've vetted a number of companies. AstroTurf was the winning bid, and we sat through a number of meetings. When I called them right away, it was same identical turf. They were able to offer a discount because they can install both fields technically at the same time. They'll have multiple people here to install the high school, new high school, and do the current high school project at the same time. So it's also a cost savings to fill in their organization. And if I didn't say this already, I know it was in the, I think I said yesterday, the NCAA is paying for the entire cost of installation. There's no district funds being spent on it. Looking at potential timing with board approval. Right now, we're looking at, I'm excited about prom and graduation, by the way. That's great news, Angie, thanks for sharing that. But after graduation is completed, we'll be looking at sometime around May 24th. We will begin the process of probably staging the site. One of the first things they have to do is build a bridge over the track for safety to not damage the track, which is already in bad shape. Last thing we need is that track damaged further. And then we'll be looking at completion sometime over the summer. And then this fall, mostly used for high school athletic events this fall. Phil is aware that high school is very busy. We have a lot of teams in the fall, a lot of activity. So mostly used for high school events this fall. Phil's organization uses it mostly on the weekends. And then we'll transition into the spring of the following year. So that's kind of a potential timeline. And I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Could you, Brian, I heard why we're kind of on an aggressive timeline for approval. We'll be asking approval next week because of the lead time needed with planning, ordering, and installation. Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. With approval next week, that gives us a lot of time to get all the architect and engineering drawings done, permitting, takes about six weeks to get through that process. With board approval next week, that gives us time to, AstroTurf has told us that gives them time to start the project in May and finish it before we start school in the fall. Thanks, Angie.
Any questions from the board for them?
I have a list, a long list. I guess initially, when I looked at this, I was like, wow, 12, 13 years, that's a long time for an agreement, especially one this short. Are our attorneys going to see this and add all of the necessary boilerplate language that would need to be, I mean, like, what if there's a dispute? How does that resolve? You know, what happens that, you know, what would be good cause for us to terminate this agreement prior to the end of it? How is this being financed? You know, is it, is that field being used for collateral? And does somebody come in and take it up if the payments aren't made? Kind of, I have a lot of questions around that kind of stuff.
I'll answer the payment part. Actually, Phil wants to answer how it's getting paid for. Do you want to get that first? Sure, I can answer that question. Like, as I mentioned, we sold the parcel down on Morse, near Morse Road, back in 2017. So we have sufficient assets in the bank that we'll be paying for all of that upfront. There won't be any, you know, the turf will be fully paid for at the time of installation. And then I think, Brian, you said that the, at least the maintenance agreement with AstroTurf, we may prepay that for the 10-year period. So most of the costs will be paid upfront, so I don't foresee any significant issues on that front.
And Lea, the licensing agreement that was distributed to the board that has had an initial review from legal counsel, but we're waiting on, just making sure, partly with feedback from today, feedback from both organized, from NCAA, and we will send that off again to have it reviewed.
A couple other questions that I had. How much does your organization plan to use the facility? Is it weekends and evenings? Is it for games only? Is it for practices? Kind of those kind of things? And how do we determine whether the district has, you know, first right to use that facility?
Yeah, and Brian, you can, if you want to speak to that.
Sure. I mean, obviously, it's our district property, so we, our athletic teams, our high school teams, we have first right to use the fields. In good faith, obviously, we would, they would give NCAA organization the second choice to use the field after our high school teams and middle school teams had their field taken care of. So looking down the road, it's going to be a middle school. I've already gone through what that scuttle looks like. So in the fall, you really don't have football being played on it. They practice three to five every day. They have games two days a week. And then after those games are completed, then NCAA could use that field in the fall.
They typically don't have weekend games at the middle school level versus high school. So that was part of the reason we thought this field would be a good location.
Yep. And as we shift into the spring, we will play lacrosse on there at the middle school level and pretty much the same thing. Our lacrosse teams will practice after school. They would use it, and then they would play games on the turf field. What an awesome opportunity for middle schoolers to play on a turf field. So adding in the fact, too, there's lights there, there's restrooms, there's parking, everything that we would need to host our games is there. One thing I did mention earlier, probably great 10 mention it now, we would look at down the road, look at some possible tournaments with that in local turf fields. That's a, in North Columbus here, we lack that ability to do that. A lot of our teams have traveled to Grand Park in Indianapolis to get to a complex where they can host more tournaments. But this is something that Phil and I could partner on and obviously bring in some revenue as well.
You mentioned having lighted fields. I mean, is there any clause in here for reimbursement for utility usage? If we're using it from sunup to sundown? I don't know, how much does it cost to run lights for facilities and things like that? And then also, there was a not mentioned in the agreement of use of the concession stand. And I guess I was kind of surprised that I assumed that for a soccer club, that there might be a need for a concession stand, and I don't think that was laid out.
Yeah, we put it in the contract, but Phil and I did talk about concession stand. I don't think NCAA would be interested in running concessions, but our booster club would be interested in running concessions out there. So if we had a weekend soccer tournament, all day on a Sunday or all day on Saturday, our boosters would be interested in running concessions out there properly.
Yeah, I just confirm that we probably would not have much of an interest in doing the concessions and would be happy if, you know, the school could make, or the boosters could make some money off of, you know, the kids and parents that are out there for the facility. And I think, Lea, one of your earlier questions was about the length of the contract. And that is really tied to the, what we believe is the usable, the useful life of the turf based on what AstroTurf has told us. And again, our intentions are, of course, to use this as a proof of concept and show you guys that this type of partnership makes a lot of sense in today's day and age and that it's a real benefit to the school. And, you know, we hope to extend that contract down the road. But, you know, we want to get through some of these, some of these types of issues and work with Brian, which we've already done to a good extent. But, you know, work through a lot of those questions you had about how that we've resolved disputes and how do we do that. We've already agreed that we're going to have a centralized scheduling software implemented so that, you know, the school can block off the hours that it needs. And we can't schedule in those hours, and then we work around that for our, you know, our program.
Yeah, okay, I didn't address, I'm sorry about that. But yes, about the lighting and utilities in that question as well. Just my take on it is that I feel like we're fortunate that they're willing to invest, you know, $600,000 into our complex. So kind of, give and take on our part would be maybe to let them use our electricity as a no-charge, you know, to host games, things like that. I don't know what it costs per hour to run the lights out there, but I was hoping that would be something that we could offer them in return.
We did, you'll notice, we did put in there for if a custodian, custodian is needed, though, for monitoring or cleaning because of something. That is something that's in our standard facilities agreements and put it in this as well.
Another question that I had was, because of having the turf field, I know when I've been at other facilities, you know, they've got the ropes around the turf field and stay off of it announcements are being made. Will having the turf field, I know a lot of people use that track on weekends for walking or whatever, does that mean at this point that the track would be restricted from use by the community during like your events and/or at other times? Do we need a new fence around it to keep people out when we're not there, kind of thing?
Yeah, so that's a really good question because I don't think we talked about that at the new high school either. You know, I know some schools lock down their stadiums completely, don't let anyone on them. We've not done that here. We allow our community to use our tracks and our stadiums on the weekends. But with it being turf, that's a really good question. So may I get back to you on that one? I don't know, Angie, you have a guarantee thoughts on that, but I don't think we've had that conversation.
I have a few, if you were. First off, Mr. Nichols, thank you very much for making the time to come up here. And it's clear that you've had pretty extensive conversations, not only with Mr. Shelton and others, but with the district leadership team to be able to start thinking this through. I'm a big fan of community partnerships. I love the idea and concept. I just, will be honest, I have several, several questions and potential concerns. Surfing over to your website, I hear all of the value that this might bring to children. But as I look at the website, I see a lot of adult soccer opportunities. And thinking about adult soccer versus kid's soccer, I see kind of two different clients there. One being maybe a little bit more aggressive and one being a little bit more finesse-driven in those types of things in terms of the sport. So there's that component that I'm kind of wrestling with in my mind. In addition, I think about the timeline of May start, knowing that the high school will need to use that field for band, for football, for soccer, for those types of things in the future. We've gone down this road before of thinking about turfing that field. And those timelines are tight, even under the best circumstances. In fact, Mr. Shelton's aware, I was responsible for putting in a turf field once before in my life. And I think that we had already started by the end of February and were pushing to get the field opened and ready for the first home football game that year. In addition to the maintenance, and Mr. Shelton, I'm happy to get with you offline on these types of things, but I just want to make sure that I'm able to thank our guest for coming and talking about the partnership and also be able to articulate my thoughts. In addition to kind of the electricity and things, the access to the restrooms would be paramount, especially kid or adult kind of contests. That continues to probably put a strain on our custodial staff and our maintenance staff in terms of usage and time spent. I'm assuming the conversations of insurance for groups that would use our facilities has already been well-covered and would be under this kind of agreement. But those types of things would still have to be talked about in terms of the personnel, the turning on of the lights, the, whether the electricity was compensated or not, the turning on of the lights, the turning off of the lights, the weekends, so forth. And then at the middle school, is it a 10-game kind of schedule? The same as a high school kind of, is it more than, less than?
In the fall season, football is typically a seven-game schedule.
Seven, thank you.
Yeah, lacrosse is typically a seven-game.
So it's like a four, four, three, home and home, home-away split?
Yeah, so if our seventh grade would have four at home, our eighth grade would have three. And right this season.
Naturally, there's also the equity conversation that I can remember coming up before in the turf conversation about football versus soccer, whether we would turf the football field and knowing there's still a soccer field, kind of, I don't know what direction, cardinal direction that is, that would be to the west of the football field. And conversations around that. There's not necessarily a middle school soccer team, though, is that correct? Nor is there a building program to consider a middle school soccer program for Big Walnut? And then finally, the conversations around how it's currently established in terms of the opportunity that would arise for students down that road? Are there building opportunities for fall lacrosse programs, spring lacrosse programs, other programs that are in the works to build opportunities for students in this district around athletics in that area? Could you speak a little bit to that one, maybe?
Let me, can I just, thank you again. It's great to be here. Can I address your question about the adult leagues? The website you looked at is probably the old one. I don't think you were even, I didn't think that was still live.
Okay. I'm happy to look at a different one.
We do have one through Big Walnut Youth Sports, who we've affiliated with.
There's a previous partnership.
To.
Thank you.
To bring the youth programs here. We've had a number of conversations with Silas, and we ran a program last fall over at the Vineyard Church for the youth. The adult leagues are an interesting thing, and I agree with you. Especially for the young adults, it's not the crowd we want at this facility.
Thank you for saying that. I didn't, I didn't necessarily say that for the record, but, I mean, we're talking about two very different things.
Being honest and, you know, direct. And, you know, the only reason we had a lot of that down there is because the youth population, you know, kind of disappeared in the area of our fields, and we weren't able to operate the youth programs like we had in the past, which again, is one of the reasons we decided to try and relocate where the kids are. You know, if we were to offer adult leagues, it would be co-ed, kind of older ages, you know, 30 or 40 and up, so that.
Pains me to hear you say older ages.
That they're going at a little slower pace. And generally speaking, from our experience with the co-ed leagues, it's not nearly as, it's not the aggressive, you know, try to take someone's, take someone's leg out type of play that you would see with the college age or, you know, post-college age groups. So, yeah, I mean, we're cognizant of those types of concerns and would work our programming to fit the facility that we're proposing. And then, Brian, I guess you can.
So if I understand you right, Phil, you're saying that it's really not an adult league that would be using this facility, it would really be about children?
Right. For the, I mean, for the most part, like I said, you know, we might, we might try to experiment and see, all right, if we do a co-ed league, 30-plus, you know, 99, how's that go? If it's a problem, we're not going to do it again. But, you know, just depending on the hours that we have. We don't, right now, with only one field, there's a fairly limited potential usage of the field. So we're going to initially focus on youth because, you know, being at the middle school and all that, it makes the most sense. And we think there's enough, you know, enough interest to make that viable again.
Thank you.
And then as far as the other sports, as far as lacrosse and, you know, other soccer, they could definitely use the fields and, you know, we can run it out to them. It's like, no different than what we do now with running out of facilities to any of our youth teams. So, I mean, they're definitely open to. So, but then that definitely will be to use.
And then.
You got another question, I can't remember about.
And, and again, I'm happy to get with you offline about some of these. I just wanted to be able to articulate them and speak them out there for this.
Maintenance question, that was really good. So, yeah, Phil and I, we've had extensive conversations on this. So let me talk about that in two-fold.
Okay.
So let's talk about the yearly maintenance first. So with AstroTurf on our new high school, we've agreed to, I believe, an eight-year maintenance plan. So they come out yearly, annually I should say, and they evaluate the field, they spread out the turf, they clean it, they disinfect it. Basically, they help us, just keep in mind, we're going to have baseball, softball, new high school and middle school all on the same maintenance schedule with the same, same company. It's supposed to come out annually and inspect it, things like that, help us take care of it. The thing with turf that's really, and that's what I was telling Phil about, and I started working on this doc and talked to some other A Ds on what, what theirs looks like, is having a daily care plan. So number one, most important is it's got to stay clean, right? And that's for turf. You got gum off of it, you got to keep, sump off the seeds. Gum can't just sit out there because it gets infested in there. So there's got to be a daily plan to take care of that. Part of that daily plan though is also, what's it like setting up the event? Who turns on the lights? Who turns off the lights? Well, who's the restrooms? Who checks the restrooms? The stuff that I go through as an A D all the time around those events is like a long list of things to do. One, obviously for safety, also making sure, and I, we can talk about that later, but I would work with them very closely down at our district safety home. For example, let's just say someone were to get hurt on the field. We have plans in place to get panelluses in there, we make sure gates get open. We have A Ds out there, we make sure that the organization knows where the A Ds at, have access to it, things like that. So that's another component to this, it's really important. But in my world as an A D, it's something I have to think through is the safety component as well. The daily maintenance, safety, annual maintenance, absolutely. We definitely thought about that. Now, I have not finalized that doc yet, but I'm currently researching, making sure I get all that in mind.
Striping and things.
Answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Striping and things like that aren't necessarily a concern, but the conversation around, I would assume it's our logo. It's not a, another logo or something like that.
We were playing up with a new logo on the field?
No, no logo?
I think so. We're just going to put socks, put three lines, football lines, soccer lines.
Soccer lines and lacrosse. Would this agreement give N C A access to the soccer field in addition to the football field that would be turfed, or are we just talking about the, the field that would be turfed?
I was talking about the current high school, which is the middle school, so just.
Okay.
So to answer your question, you were referencing access to the new high school, right?
No, exactly, just right next to it, the second field right next to it.
The current soccer field.
So actually just currently that, that's our field.
Thank you.
And I guess I'll just add, we did have conversations around current, current staffing and just would this or would this not add more to that? And I think part of what we talked about is what Brian mentioned earlier. It might be more of a reallocation of time, the hours that we're putting into striping the field on a weekly basis when there are football events, the, the time it takes to water it, to already, I think Brian mentioned in some of our conversations that custodial workers are already going out and checking the fields, mowing it, just all those things that are already done. The hope would be that it wouldn't, it would hopefully save time, but didn't anticipate it necessarily adding time to anybody's work schedule.
Mr. Fuji, you alluded to the timeline being aggressive. I agree. I mean, I see these projects get extended into and delayed to start, so there's principles in areas that have that issue.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously there's no guarantee with weather and, you know, things could go wrong in a, in a project like this.
Well, and I'd hate for the last football season in the current facility for those high school varsity players who have already gone through a pandemic, let's say, to be delayed and us, you know, just like Marysville did two years ago when they opened up their new field. They had to readjust all of their schedules to push their home games to the back end of that schedule.
Yeah, I think their turf is fine and that's, I don't.
It was about their gate and their stadium, right?
Some other issues there. I think what I'd like to do, to answer your question and give it some more validity would be to just reach back out to Dan and Isaac at AstroTurf. And then I'll flex some more down and then I'll share with you their plan that aligns with the, the building of the new high school and with Jeff Ball and the building as well. So I think the one thing that originally I heard this, like while the timing could be impeccable, I was concerned as well about not being able to have a fall season or fall soccer season because it's not done. But then after talking to Dan and Jeff, the timing seemed to be like really a lot.
Sure, right. Definitely people out there smarter than me about that.
So I, so I felt good about it, obviously it was a good piece. But I, I do like the idea that we're doing another complex at the same time and it does make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you on one information.
Thank you.
Another question? Yeah, so again, thank you for taking the time to come out and, you know, I appreciate this proposal. I think it's, you know, in, in concept, it's a really great idea, obviously some things to work out. And I think Mr. Fuji and Mrs. Lee have already kind of laid out a lot of the questions that I would have also, but just a few other things came to mind. I'm actually, I think, fairly familiar with the organization as my son used to play club for the Blast, so that's where his team played for many years, your, your previous location. I'm curious, is this for, do you have soccer teams only at this point? And will N C A A expand to go into other sports or are you remaining soccer primarily?
At this point, we're doing primarily soccer. Again, now we're affiliated with Big Walnut Youth Sports. They kind of have a lot of the other sports already, you know, programs already, you know, developed and running. So, you know, would we look down the road and something else, maybe, but primarily soccer.
Okay. And that was kind of one of my other questions is would this partnership cut off other clubs in the area? But if the Big Walnut Youth Sports is kind of part of what you do, then they would also be able to use the facility and?
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to be, you know, we're not going to use a hundred percent of the time outside of the school, outside of the school to walk in time. So I anticipate there'll be other times lots and again, using the scheduling software will be a big help in that regard so that everybody can have, can see what slots are available and we can work in, with them and make sure that we're providing opportunities.
So in this time period since 2017, have you primarily just been using the vineyard? Or have there been other fields?
Primarily, we, yeah, primarily we've just used the vineyard area. We also have a small indoor facility, but that's primarily more for training for the, that we use for the rec kids over this past winter.
And are, are you seeing this field as more of a, like a training area? Or is it going to be used primarily for games?
Well, for the rec program, it would be, you know, probably an evening of training and, and some games, both. We're trying to, you probably know, you know, parent volunteerism has gone down a bit, especially in the youth sports area. So we're trying what we think is a better model where we'll provide most of the training through, you know, the group activities and break out and play small-sized games so that they can really learn the sport and learn the skills that they'll need, you know, to play in high school and, you know, enjoy it and have, you know, have a good experience.
Okay. Other questions, Greg, anything?
Everybody's covered pretty much everything with one, one exception. If the length of the contract's based on the useful life of the turf, at the end of that contract, the turf's going to have to be replaced, is that addressed? Or is it going to be that the school system has to bear that cost?
Yeah, I think we've, we've agreed to partner on that across. And I think that we're both going to have, well, let's start with the new high school first of all, because we also have a placement plan for the new high school fields for baseball, softball and the new high school stadium. So obviously we're going to have to think about that as well because that's all going to come at the same time as this one. And primary discussions here with our leadership team is to take a portion, percentage, we haven't determined that amount yet, of all rented time and apply that toward replacement costs in that twelve to fourteen year mark. Jeremy and I had talked about this last week. We're willing to finalize what that looks like going into the new high school and go rent that out. That would be some income that we can use for that. It'd be the same thing that we would do with the middle school field. We can take a portion of the rental and apply that toward replacement costs.
Doug, I, I had thought of that as well and have highly recommended that any rental of those fields that we do look at, setting up a fund as soon as our fields are ready and that those are put into that fund every single rental. And kind of the, the uses of it will hopefully help to fund a good portion of that replacement at the end of it. And that, that money will just go in there and stay until it's needed, until year twelve, fourteen, whatever it might be that we'd need to replace it.
Brian, as you talk to your A D colleagues, that's a pretty common practice, correct?
Yes. One thing I want to add on that is, you know, talking to AstroTurf, the turf at the current high school, the new middle school, the partnership with N C A, we're expecting that turf to last a little longer than our current, our new high school stadium. Reason why is it's going to be sports, it's going to be middle school sports, the kids are smaller. It's not, it's not aggressive as the high school could get tackled on it, things like that. So it's probably going to be a couple of years off, so it might not be a hundred percent at the same time. We're expecting that for the last, and that's kind of why we went twelve years on it. We probably could maybe go a couple more years on that piece. But the new high school, we're going to have ten to twelve replacement. With the middle school, we're going to have a twelve to fourteen replacement. But we settled on the earlier part of twelve, feeling confident that that could last for twelve years.
And one other thing. Will the district have a copy? I don't even know how you address that, the background checks, since we're talking youth and coaches. Who, how are, how will your organization report to our organization for those background checks and stuff? For the interaction with?
Sure, no, that's a good question. One, Big Walnut Youth Sports in, one of the reasons we affiliate with them has a background check system already in place that we would, I guess, we would also, that we also used in this past fall. That covers the parents. For the rest of our organization, most, you know, all the coaches have to be carded and background checked through one of the national soccer organizations, either Ohio South or Ohio, Ohio Association now, or U S Club. We could certainly provide copies of that to Brian, you know, for all the coaches.
Well, that's my question. In other words, where do those records reside? Because ultimately the information.
They're all online, I mean, it's all, all of it's an online database for the most part now. So it's just a matter of providing a link for the fact, the, any coach with a card has, by virtue of having the card passed, a background check. And concussion training and everything else, so.
That's a, that's a really good question, Doug. So to hold there one, in Ohio, a seven to twelve coach, they actually have to have a coaching license on our stadium. So we require our coaches, whether you're paid or volunteer, they have to have a coaching license. It's pretty in-depth, the CPR, concussion, and heart testing, things like that. Should we monitor that excessively to that seven to twelve level? At the youth level, they don't acquire coaching license per se, but they want esports, they want baseball association, they all like paying esports, that these are fields, they all require background investigations. Now, I have not checked all of those, but my assumption is that they are, they're monitoring that. That's something I probably need to be deeper into.
Somebody mentioned in, in this process brought up about the rental fees for the facility. Would we with this agreement still have the ability, if, you know, the school district isn't using it, soccer association isn't using it, can we, does this agreement allow us to?
Rent contests.
Rent this facility, pardon, yeah, whatever it might be, to use this and charge those rental fees for the district to keep those fees? Or is there some division of those fees between N C A A and B W?
First question as well, and I talked about that as well, but they, if it's in Phil's mind or N C A's mind, they would, they would get that portion of those fees that they're charging, which would align the R fees by the way, it would not be a big difference. We have delineated that a rental charge for games is different than a rental charge for practices. Games to the football fans, have that dog clean up, we have things to have the stadiums there, it's just much more people to manage. So the charge to post a game would be more expensive than for practice. But yes, when N C A's not renting it out, we have the ability to rent it out to whoever we want to use it for.
What kind of fees are we talking that N C A A or B W would get for utilizing our facility?
Yeah, really, turf can be really expensive. I mean, I sent our lacrosse team offsite now, they, they practice offsite. When our soccer team was making a state run for these, we would rent turf fields. It's going to be expensively, I'd pay a lot of money out of my athletic budget for our teams. And they can be up to two hundred and fifty dollars an hour to rent a, to rent a turf field. Renting it locally at our local teams, probably would not charge that much, something in that one fifty range probably.
So you mentioned during N C A A's time when they rent the facility. So like what kind of organizations would you guys be renting that facility to?
Mostly the ones we rent to would be other, let's say, lacrosse rec program if they needed it. Or we'd probably do some travel, club soccer rentals for games, a few weeks, you know, that's probably a few weekends here and there. You know, as Brian alluded to, it's possible we could try to do, you know, some smaller tournaments down the road, which again would be youth teams, other youth teams in the area.
As far as the, you know, their time versus our time, is it, you know, there's this kind of the standard schedule and then if there's time unblocked, is that just kind of like if you schedule something for that time first, then it's Big Walnut time? Or are there set, you know, like weekend hours this time to this time or N C A A time and these are Big Walnut time?
To answer a question, I, I guess, I don't think it's quite that complicated. You know, I think that when, for example, they have the time on the weekends and they're renting it out to a new soccer team or a lacrosse team, I don't know if there's going to be that much more time available to rent out to someone else. I mean, with our school team doing it first, there's always so much need for our school team. I don't know how much more time is going to be available to rent it out for other teams. But I know, you know, our, our children play soccer at the frame, so I know on the weekends, most of schools in the area, their, their turf fields, they rent it out pretty much all weekend long with soccer clubs and soccer organizations and lacrosse and things like that. So I know there's a need there, but I think we need to take care of our own team first before we start looking at renting it out to an outside organization. But I want to make sure my high school team and most of the teams are taking care of first. So we're going to have two fields to make that happen. So I want to make sure that that, those teams have not been able, we've not been able to meet their needs for the last many years because we don't have the, you've got to rent out facilities, you've got to go offsite. It's a little bit embarrassing and I got to send my high school team to another school. But my, my main focus is to take care of our team first before I start renting out, renting it to someone else. Hope to answer your question there.
Yeah, well, and as a soccer parent, very appreciative. My son has had to go down to Westerfield South multiple times to practice on their turf or Westerville North multiple times to practice on their turf. And it's usually late at night and then they're driving, you know. So again, I think it's, I think it's fantastic for our community. In reference to Doug's question and Jeremy's response about the rental fees and putting some of that aside, I think that's a fantastic idea. My question or comment about that is, is that, that's going to be part of the operating fund then? So not restricted like improvement funds are so that down the road that money could? Is there a way to kind of protect that money?
Yeah, I would, I would put it into the permanent improvement fund. Just like we get levy dollars for permanent improvement, we're putting our N C A dollars. I would anticipate, well, I wouldn't just anticipate, I would plan on that it would be there so it's specifically being earmarked, set aside for the maintenance or replacement of that field in the future. So yes, it would be restricted.
Can you make this, is anything to, I mean, it's, can you take any funds and as long as you? I mean, can you take any funds and as long as you put them into the permanent improvement? It's permanent improvements and you can't touch it for anything else? Do you need to do something to designate those funds as?
If we wanted to, we could, we could do something specifically restricting it to that. I don't know as though it's necessary, but I would, what I would plan to do is within that permanent improvement fund, we can set up something called a special cost center. And we would name it specifically that it is for the turf replacement. And those dollars would sit there until the next Astroturf contract came up to use those funds for it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. This is super exciting, I think, for an opportunity for our community. Thanks for your time this morning.
Thank you for your time as well. And we'll be looking forward to hearing back.
We had a couple of follow-up items that you get back on, but just as a reminder to the board, we are going to finalize a couple of things. I know Jeremy mentioned sending it back to our attorney one more time. But we will be looking to put this on the agenda next week. So if you have any other questions and you continue to think about it, look at it, please reach out so that we can make sure they're answered before next Thursday. Thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
You all right?
Did he really? Getting older, man.
You should have given him a chair to start with.
Thanks for this, by the way.
All right, thank you. Doug has just a quick preview for an item for next week as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I know I've taken for time. I just wanted to share that software that they talked about. What's amazing about that, and NCAA's talking about funding that as well, is that can be used for all facilities. So not just the middle school or future middle school site. We use to schedule the theater at both school, the old high school and the new high school, the fields, an elementary school, et cetera. So it's a great, and it also is a potential tool, as we're vetting it through potentially, to expand for maintenance. So again, I've been requesting or hoping we get that. So actually, we have finding some data, have work tickets that are more electronic, et cetera. So it's a system that will expand. So this may be an impetus to get us there, kind of through the back door, if you will. But I just wanted to expand that that software, if it moves forward, would have more needs or uses than just this field. So I'm here today real quick. I know we've got to hurry. I guess one board member's leaving a little bit, so I'll be quick. Commissioning services. So I want to discuss today, we're looking at expanding the services of the contract Colonel Andrew Brewer Garrett. Again, they were hired initially to do the elementary. Yes, you have a two-page or one-page, two sides of what was sent out a couple of days ago. This is to amend their contract to complete the services necessary for the high school. You may recall, we opted to bring them under contract for the elementary, the central energy plant. They did a little bit of review on the high school since it ties to the central energy plant. And we really wanted to see what kind of return on investment we got, kind of value, how do we work with them, et cetera. But I'm very pleased with how that's worked out. And so asked them to expand those services to the complete high school. Again, benefits of commissioning, just to remind you, that's essentially somebody, I would say, test driving the car. But actually, they're there in the plant, watching it being built. They're talking to the engineers, they're talking to the contractors. They're really the ultimate owner's agent, if you will. It's trying to stitch together everything, but they're also test driving it. And that's the huge part, that they're actually making sure it functions. We talked about utilities with the football idea. And talk, more importantly, are we saving and maximizing return on investment of those public dollars for how the system is running, both for utilities but also long-term maintenance and care? So there's a huge value for it. Also sharing, just to let you know, the mechanical systems in these buildings are 20% of the upfront cost, if you will. So it's a huge capital investment the district's making. And this is just a small tool, hopefully ensure that those dollars and the systems associated are working properly. So I'm going to stop there and some other things to share, but I know we're tight on time and see if anyone has questions. Intention is to come back next week with an actual resolution to amend their contract.
I think if you have other things to share, please feel free to do so.
Uh huh, okay, Ken. I was just going to remind you again, the benefits. Again, the fact that, again, utility costs are probably second only to HR. So again, if we're not maximizing utility usage on these buildings, and this is a, I have the percentage down a second ago. This is a 66% increase, the amount of square footage this district's going to have when these two buildings open. 66%. It's absurd when you say that.
When you say both buildings?
Both buildings together equate to 400 grand, 40,000 square feet. And we're currently about 600,000. That includes this building, transportation, everything. We're going to grow from 600,000 to about a million square feet, or roughly 66%. You say that out loud, it's absurd how big the district's going to get from a percentage standpoint. We've talked about it before. So again, and of that, 20% of it is just mechanical systems. So huge investment, a huge value. Just want to reinforce, because Jeremy and I have talked a lot about utilities and we're planning accordingly for those operating costs that we're going to start hitting, especially as the high school builds up. Now, that's probably the biggest thing, just to reinforce again, the value of this and making sure we're being, spending as little as we have to, to ensure maximum benefit of those systems and buildings. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions.
Doug, what was our first contract amount with them?
The first contract was for $49,900, $49,900. So this brings us up to, and I shouldn't have my glasses on, I'm sorry. Brings us up to $120,000, 200, 120,000, $120,200, which puts us at about 30 cents a square foot. That was probably another factor to share. Usually, commissioning can have a range of 30 to 80 cents a square foot. We're landing at about 30 cents a square foot for the entire complex, is to share. So fairly reasonable price in terms of their services. And part of that benefit is the fact that we already had them under contract for phase one is really helping us on the, on the high school with their fee and services.
And when was that, $49,900?
We're at 30 cents a square foot and the total was, oh, what was the previous, $49,900?
Yeah, I'm just looking timeline. When was that?
Couple months ago.
Yeah, that was recently.
They were, they were awarded about 15 months ago.
Oh, is that long?
Wow. I would have said four.
No, they were there essentially when we were about, about the same time as the high school now, about a third of the way through, halfway through construction. We brought them onboard and they reviewed the drawings, caught up. And then, because they do do a fair amount of time, like I said, inspecting as pipes are going in, ductwork's going in. This is a very logical time to bring them in. And then the bulk of their work is really, as systems are starting up and they're working at the testing reports, working with the contractors, actually getting online and operating the system themselves. That's where the bulk of their time is spent, near the end of the job.
Can you remind me, is this $70,300 new dollars? Or was this kind of captured in the full project already? And this is just an allocation?
So the, it's a double answer. So originally, there was $250,000 in the architect's contract for commissioning. Of that, we only assigned 50 of it to go to Brewer Garrett. The other 200 that was in DSWC's contract will be coming back to the board next month to walk through a final amendment to the architect's contract. So they have 250 in their contract, 50 of it, we said, let's earmark at Brewer Garrett. The other 200 went back to help the project move forward. So there is not 200,000 still sitting there to you. This would be from contingency, which includes interest on the project. So to answer your question, no, there's not a line item sitting there to fund this $70,000.
I will add just a little bit to that. We have gained some savings and rebates to, that would offset some of this as additional costs due to what we've been able to get through ADP, or not ADP. I think some we're looking for, we might be able to get some still additional through consolidated, but from Columbia Gas, we've gotten.
About 16,000. I think so, off the top of my head.
I don't, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I could get that if you'd like.
And Jeremy's correct. We are still pursuing, are still working with Consolidated Electric. They still have some rebate programs that will apply to the entire campus. That may be in the 10,000 range again. It's not tens and tens of thousands that we're pursuing with them. And then as the high school comes online, we can also pursue some, again, potential opportunities with Columbia Gas as well.
But you said this is part of the contingency, which again, well, next week we'll see an update on that.
Yes, so at the same time, in theory, this resolution comes forward, you'd also see the latest report, correct?
Anything else for Doug?
Are you sad that we don't have as many questions for you as we give it out first?
No. But good questions for them. And I've been a part of that process, Jeremy has, a lot of us have. There's been a lot of vetting happening on that and a lot of good interaction with that group so far. So excited that can move forward. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all I have today.
Okay. Thank you. Item number seven, treasurer's report, Jeremy.
Okay, well, I have a couple items and we'll be starting with a guest, Maggie Neely from Gallagher Benefit Services. We at our, our insurance committee meeting last month, I believe it was, talked about self-funding as a potential option as our strategic plan on insurance. I know we've talked a lot about insurance over the last three-ish years and was happy in the fall to be able to bring insurance rates that were kind of on trend or a little below what, what is seen for fully insured plans. So another thing that just trying to evaluate if this would be good for us is self-insuring and wanted Maggie to come in as our benefit consultant to just give the board a little idea of what that means if that is something that is financially feasible and prudent for us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Buskirk, I appreciate it. Just to give everybody an idea, insurance is a study of risk, okay? So what we want to do with the district is take a conservative, calculated risk. And that is, right now, a lot of your premium goes towards paying your vendor, United Healthcare. They're a publicly traded company, so they have to build in a piece of, they have to build in a piece of equity that they give back to their members year over year over year. If you self-insure, you can stay with the vendor you have or choose other vendors. And that piece of profit that you're paying to the big insurance companies, you can kind of cut that out and that savings would then stay in the district. So I want to talk a little bit about, about risk and how conservative and calculated these risks are. We couldn't really look at the, these type of products for the past few years just because the performance of the plan wasn't there. Now that the, now that the funding has turned around and you folks are getting more on an equal footing with your funding, this is the time to start looking at, at other opportunities for the district to be able to save money. To give you an idea, in 2019, you're, you're an $8 million spend all in for your health insurance, health insurance alone. Through 11 months of 2020, you're at $6.5 million. So the timing for this is good. We have a group of actuaries and underwriters at Gallagher that will prepare a self-funded feasibility study to see if it's feasible. But one of the first steps we want to look at is, we weren't able really to put your plan out into the market because you weren't marketable based on the large number of claims and jumbo claims that are there. Our plan, you know, with, with the board's blessing, with, with Mr. Buskirk's direction, is that we're going to market the plan this year. There are a couple other options. It's not just fully insured and not just self-funding. There are some baby step programs that are partially self-funded that will help you put away some equity. And how these programs work are, you put about 10% risk of your premium. So you fund for 100% of your premium. And if you only spend 90%, you, you share that with, with the insurance company. So it is, it is an opportunity that we didn't think we would have coming out of the pandemic. A lot of the big companies are offering that, the Anthe's, the Aetna's, the United Healthcare's and MMOs of the world. And Cigna also has a big, a big plan with that. So now that the plan is paying for itself, the other options are available, self-funding, partially self-funding, and looking at the, looking at the risk from a calculated point of view. Going to ask you, you each have a blue and white folder in front of you on page two to see, you know, to try to explain to you this, your size of group and the type of plan you're on fits well into self-funding. So if you look at page two, you folks are on a high deductible health plan and you're represented in the light blue number. And you have between 200 and 999 workers. So folks like you, 66% of them have a self-funded option, okay? If you look at all firms on a high deductible health plan, 66% of all firms, all companies, school districts, counties, states, and municipalities, all have, all are looking at that. So the vast majority of people consider self-funding or at least a partial self-funding. So for consideration for the district on page three, we talk about who holds the risk. And again, with, the more risk that the district's willing to take, the more rewards come with that. So who's holding the risk? When you're fully insured, as you are today, United Healthcare holds all of your risk. If you removed self-funding, you would hold partial risk, you would buy reinsurance or stop loss in two different categories. One for a specific large claimant and then an umbrella policy or an aggregate coverage over the whole plan. So again, you wouldn't, wouldn't bear like the entire risk. Right now, when you have a claim over $125,000, that's pooled with all claims that United Healthcare has in the state of Ohio. The same would happen, instead of it being pooled that way, you would buy a, a specific stop loss coverage at the same rate to keep, keep things rolling at the same rate. Who's responsible for claims? There would be a big increase in the amount of work for Mr. Buskirk's office. Mr. Buskirk, I worked with him in a prior district and he's very familiar with self-funding. There'll be times where, where your, your claims are coming in as expected and then there'll be other times where your claims are higher. His office would have to ride that claims roller coaster. Again, to your members and probably the best thing for your members is that, let's say you stayed self-funded with United Healthcare, their cards would look the same, they'd have the same doctors, they'd have the same network. To your members, they wouldn't realize whether you were self-funded or fully insured. It's not, you would be purchasing the same services, but just on a self-funded basis. Again, there's different costs and expenses. You would have to pay, you know, your specific stop loss, your aggregate stop loss. And Ohio Revised Code 9.833 would call for an actuary evaluation, an actuary evaluation of your plan that you would have adequate reserves should you decide to go back to being fully insured, that you could pay for the runout. So on page four, it really walks through what the advantages and disadvantages are about being self-funded versus fully insured. I know all of you are very capable of looking at this. Again, there are some minor fees that are paid. There's a $2.66 per core fee now that annually, that United Healthcare pays for you, you'd have to pay those things. Our compliance team would keep Mr. Buskirk aware of when those fees would be due and how they need to be paid. If you look at page five, it would talk about your cash flow and what it would look like. In the beginning, you would be able to reserve quite a bit of money. Towards the end of the year, you'd be paying out quite a bit more. And again, being on a high deductible health plan, that's going to even, you're going to save a lot more in the first couple of months when people are meaning they're deductible and you'll be paying out quite a bit more in the last quarter of the year. So again, the volatility of your plan would, would change slightly just based on cash flow and when it would come in. We just wanted the district to be aware that we were looking at other options and other possibilities. And again, we'd like to proceed with the self-funded feasibility study with our actuaries and underwriters if, as directed by the finance team. And I'm here to answer any questions for you folks. I guess I should have started with, I have a public sector book of business. The majority of my, my clients are school districts, counties, cities, municipalities. I have to say, 90% of my book of business is self-funded. You know, from a technical school that has 123 people, they've been self-funded for 20 years to, you know, very large school systems. There, there are all kinds of ways that you can save money once you're self-funded. There are consortiums just to buy stop loss together. There are, it, it opens a big plethora of. There are, it, it opens a big plethora of other cost-saving ideas. And I, I think it's of great value to at least look at this. And when we market the plan, we haven't been able to take it out to market for a few years. When we market the plan this year, I think it's wise to market it and at least to fathom. Wanted to look at who your carrier is because if you are self-funded, discounts really matter. You're with United Healthcare now, they have some of the biggest discounts in the state of Ohio. It's a national network. You've, you've got all those bells and whistles built into your program. They're a good carrier, but somebody might get a little bit more aggressive with their pricing coming out of pandemic. So we think it's important to market the plan and we think it's important to market the plan with maybe some of those baby step kind of programs in between, looking at the partially self-funded. So the three to five years down the line, when you've got a little bit of cushion built up from those partially self-funded plans that offer you the protection of fully insured and, and the benefits of saving the money. So we'd like to look at it in two ways for now and look to move fully self-funded within three to five years. Jeremy?
Really, the intention for today was wanted to give you an opportunity to just kind of get an idea of what self-funded was if you, if you hadn't heard it before, the pros, the cons. And so, yeah, if you have questions for Maggie, feel free.
Really, maybe my question is, is more for you, Jeremy. We've, I believe that this has been considered in the past and, and I think maybe Maggie just answered it in terms of the why now. I hadn't thought about the pandemic and the potential for marketing from a positive side. I thought about it maybe from the employee side of the house in terms of what they would see. So can you maybe tell me why now, why this makes sense in this space?
Kind of, I'll go back to what I said at the very beginning is, I, let's see, I started here in 2017 and I think it was-
Seems like just yesterday.
Yeah, I know. And I, and I think it was just that year that we were starting to know that there was a very high claim. I, I can't speak to the past of why we, why we didn't do self-funding before.
We were just starting to investigate it when we got that high claim.
So, so with that, it kind of took that off the table, didn't make it.
Okay.
That, that's a lot of risk to shoulder when you're just starting. So now, fast forward three years and not only have we gone from a pretty low deductible, a historical plan, I'm going to call it, of a PPO for some of our individuals, well, all of our individuals at one point, and, and then shifting to some different plans to now being on a high deductible. My thoughts on a high deductible, it, it does give a little more light to the individual and how they're spending. But it does also give us a little more cushion at the beginning as we're ramping up, as well as there's rollout from being on a fully insured plan at the beginning of a year. So I feel fairly comfortable that we would set the rates, we would, we would be able to weather that beginning. May need to advance some funds if we were to, to do this as a January 1 at some point. But that's also the, the plan that would allow us to build some equity would help with that if we did one of those in the next couple of years. So why now? I think we've done a lot of, a lot of hard work to get our plan sustaining itself better. And our, our current premium structure is accounting for now the, the higher claims. And it would, we're just in a, we're in a better spot than we were three years ago.
Thank you. And this, and, and if this were to be considered, it would be considered as a July 1 start?
We, I, we would roll it in, in the, the normal plan year. We're already, we're a calendar year for our insurances. So it would, it would most likely go into effect on January 1 of whatever year we did it. So if, if the stars align and it made sense for us to go fully self-insured this for next year, we would be doing the planning right now and it would be January 1 of 2022. But that's something we'll have to look at. Maybe the, the in-between plan makes more sense for us for the next one, two years. And then year three, it makes the most sense, which then would put us at like a, a January of '25.
Thank you, thank you.
Just to, to talk about the partially self-funded plans, they're not always offered to public sector employer groups. Insurance companies have to register their plans with the state, with the Ohio Department of Insurance and they have to have that plan registered, that they're going to offer to, to a public entity. So those plans come on and off the market, so timing is everything in life. And we've got a number of carriers that we've reached out to that said, yes, we have a partially self-funded plan that might, might fit your school group around 300 lives on the plan. So again, they're registered for the state for 1-1-2022. To give you a timing, we would put an RFP out for the month of June. The vendors, we would probably put it to the five largest healthcare vendors in the state. Then in July, we would work back and forth with them to massage their quotes to be able to meet big walnuts needs and then be able to roll it out to the district in the beginning of August. And it would be for 1-1-2022. It's, it's a long planning stage to be able to get, get folks and to be able to massage those quotes into what you want to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, I don't really have any questions. I guess I, I think it absolutely makes sense to investigate it. I guess my only concern is that this makes, the treasurer's office, this makes your job a lot harder, I, I would suspect for budgeting. And I mean, I, you know, I definitely think that needs to be taken into consideration too, is what your group can handle. And, and then also, cash flow wise or, or because of cash requirements, you know, for being self-funded, does that ever put us into a bind if we struggle to pass a levy or anything like that, like how does that?
So that's a, that's a good question. The, the way that's being self-funded is, is you're setting up a separate fund. So we're already stocking away those funds. I'll, I'll equate it kind of what we were saying with the, the maintenance for the TURF. Is there are specific requirements in revised code as well that, that, and we would, we would be setting our premiums in such a way that would, would do that. We, we get the same, and from a budgeting standpoint, I don't know that it would make a huge difference in that we are, we're still going to be paying a premium. We are at the mercy more of the insurance company when we're fully insured is that they're telling us what it's going to be. And as we go self-insured, we're, we're kind of doing that to ourselves now. Except for there can be a little more cushion in, if we've had really good years, we build reserves. So you can, you can maybe adjust it a little more. So I would say it might give us a little more budget stability in some ways if we didn't pass a levy. And it would, it would mean then that we're reducing staff, which would reduce the amount of claims. And because 80, probably about 83% of what we do is people, salaries and benefits. So the only place that we have to adjust that is going to be in the people, which would also drive down the premiums, would drive down potentially the risk pool and so on and so forth. And if it got really bad, that's when you probably look at going back to fully insured and. Good, great question.
And again, the stop loss coverage can be purchased that you can cover the runout if you decide. You would make that decision most likely a year in advance and you could, you could purchase the stop loss to buy terminal, what's called terminal liability if you wanted to go back to being fully insured. I, I, I worked with Mr. Buskirk in a previous district. He's very knowledgeable about self-funding. He understands what steps need to be ta, taken. I would think, you know, my concern is building up the, the HIPAA privacy net around here. There'd be some, some expense to that. You know, there'd have to be a secure server for medical claims to sit on because and, and Mr. Buskirk and maybe one or two staff members would only have access to those claims. To me, that's, that's a, a big concern to the district. Our compliance team would come out. We have a compliance attorney that we meet biannually with, with the district. We would bring him out to meet with Mr. Buskirk and the staff just to walk through how specific that would need to be. Anything else for this morning?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, it's a pleasure to be up here this morning.
Thank you, Maggie.
All right, and this didn't make it on the, the notes here for the meeting, but have one more thing to present to the board. I provided to you a legal size document and things. In follow-up to Mark doing the staffing at the 250 homes level, tried to do an update to the five-year forecast model as well as the extended forecast. I'm going to go over real briefly that front page and you'll notice that things are better than what we presented in November. And I want to give you just a little light of, of some of the things that I've included into this change in, in addition to that 250 home staffing model. We have heard a lot of feedback from the state that, well, we got $307,000 back in February related to the cuts that we got in May of last year. So that puts us, we're about a quarter of a million dollars still under what we would have gotten in '19. But what we're hearing is that with the new buy-in and budget and I know the fair funding plan, that's still up in the air and what that exactly is going to mean for us. But in general, what we're hearing is that we should be able to have state funding back at the levels of '19 for this, this next fiscal year. So what we had originally had was a, a decrease in this year. We had a, and then just not knowing how things were going to shake out, I had also had about a slow phase back in, in this buy-in and budget in our November forecast. So that accounts for between what we've gotten back in the future years, about a million dollars benefit to us in the, the three-year period. You add to that that we have seen extra gross, growth in our property taxes, so that's included in this. Adjusted some different things. I know I've mentioned at our, our board meetings with the financial report that we have trended slightly under in a lot of areas. I've tried to adjust that as well for this model. So expenses are slightly down in what you're seeing here and, and revenue has, has made a nice rebound in areas and, and anticipated further growth. So those are kind of high-level, some of the things that, that have changed in this. The second payment of our workers' comp dividend is also included in this for the fiscal year '21. And that was a little over a quarter of a million dollars in December. That was not in our November forecast. So all of those pieces together kind of go into why it, it looks definitely better. And I like to be a little closer on my expenses, but this is one of those years that trends are not followable. So I, things are under and when we're doing the best we can to be able to show that. So in making those changes, also wanted then to provide the board with a couple different scenarios of what, what does that mean? So you're getting, the, the front page is showing the forecast without any additional revenue. You'll see here a couple different scenarios and, and really the biggest story to tell is that it would be, it would really be my recommendation, and I think we've talked about this for many, several years now, that probably this fall would be the most advantageous from just a purely financial side for, for a new proposal to our community. The, the timing then from there out, I know we've had Mr. Moore come in before. He's presented something that looks much like this. But the, the things that we've made, changes to the growth that we've seen have given us a little bit more flexibility, I would say, in, in the coming years. But really, the, the first proposal is going to make a difference on when, when that timing comes, what kind of flexibility we do have. The longer you wait, the, the potential of bigger hole you can dig yourself into, then you have to build up those reserves and come, come out. So I will go over quickly the, the first one and, and then the others are, are very similar. But added a couple things to the bottom there also. As part of the goals that we've presented to the board as our strategic plan, one of those things was watching our cash balance. So that will be something that as we look through these, you'll see, is the 60-day cash balance met? Okay, okay, okay. And that will be also something that we'll have to decide of, are we? I would never recommend that we, we allow ourselves to get below 30 days. The recommended is a 60-day. But when we're in a growing phase, I can understand that we might want to look at something in be, in between those. So the, keeping that in mind and thinking, even though this is showing through 34, thinking that we've kind of been looking at that 10-year period, try to put together something that hit all the 60-day balance marks out to 31. And, and we're pretty close in that 31-year. That means a 8.35 and then that gives us some flexibility to have a lower ask in, in future ones. So that would be 8.35 mils in, it would be a November of '21 is what this would be assuming. And then working our way out, you'll see to those others. Remind, remembering that the way that it, it is best for our district, because we are at the 20-mil floor, is that we need to be doing emergency levies followed by substitute levies. The emergency levies are a fixed sum type of a levy that only collects the amount that it's approved for. And then when we're able to substitute it, then it does capture the growth in our community. I will, if you flip the next page, another possible is kind of that same timeline of requests, but a 7-9. You'll notice that it, it reduces that 60-day balance okay in, in some of the later years. But over what would be the five-year forecast period, it still hits those 60-day marks and it, and it reduces that, that initial ask in the first year and then out. A third one is if, still looking at that, that initial one at 7-9 and then potentially being able to not need a second request a little later. And then the third one, if we did not look at this fall, then it, and, and so that would mean somewhere in '22, we would not actually begin collections on any, any new request until what would be our fiscal year '23. That would be January of, of '23 if, if we asked sometime in '22. You'll notice that that does then increase what would need to be, to be asked for to still be able to hit those marks. And, and also this one does not hit those 60-day cash balances quite as, as good as what the, the previous ones do, but still puts us at least in a 30, over a 30-day cash balance over the, the period of the forecast as well as into the future. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop there and definitely open for questions because I know this is a lot to digest. But wanted to give you these because I know that what we're looking at is, and, and you'll, you'll see this in the 250 model on, on the front page. We've been talking about for some time that, what our story is. That our story is that we're growing. I know that when I've done my five-year forecast- I know that when I've done my five-year forecast, we've seen that, that trending line down, our cash balance, so I feel like there, we've been talking for some time that there is action that needs to be taken if we are going to execute the, the plan that we've been talking about for our, our, our schools and our community. So, wanted to give you a couple scenarios, and if you have questions, you want me to look at some other, other timing of things, I can do that, but wanted to give you some, some initial looks at, at what seems the most feasible. So, open for, open for questions.
So, the expenses built into this are based upon enrollment numbers from the 250 permit per year?
You, you are correct, Mr. Crowe. And, and I will also remind everybody that these are, this is using the, the information we have, and as I put at the bottom of each one of these, 'cause don't lose sight of, as Mark has said, if we're not seeing the enrollment and the staffing doesn't, if the staffing shouldn't be there, it's not gonna be there.
And then the mileage may be lower.
Correct.
When we get up to these further years, if we haven't needed to.
And, and I think you've made this point before, Mr. Crowe, that, you know, you, you get too far out, a lot can happen. So, while what these scenarios are looking at are extra asks in the future at a certain amount, that's not set in stone. I think what we are looking at, though, is the first action can definitely drive what our, our future actions might need to be, to be able to, to execute the plan that's been presented.
Well, I went back and did some checking.
Sure.
Now that the numbers are available. And the average over the last four years from 2017 to 2020 for building permits was 253 averaged. The Future Think, the second report, shows that we should have added in those four years 477 students.
Okay.
We only had 335, which means that even with the second revision of the Future Think, the numbers don't jive. That's substantial.
It can be, and I think that's why we continue to say that we're, we watch enrollment every year. So, if, what we're trying to do here is, is build a baseline, right? Any, any good plan starts with a starting point, and I think that's what we're trying to do. So, again, to your point, if, and, and what we have done over the last couple of years, too, is added very few staff, partly as cost-containment measures, but also in looking at what's the enrollment, what can we afford, what can we, what can we do? Does it make sense to add this position? And, and I can, I work very closely with Mark and Angie, and, and there are times where what we have put together in the spring is very different than the fall, because maybe a special needs student that moved in didn't really need the services that, that were thought. So, we, we didn't add a full intervention specialist or those different scenarios. I think Angie...
Yeah, I could add a few things. First of all, just as a reminder, that we did flatline on enrollment at the beginning of the year. We have picked up 75 students, though, since that initial report that Mark did at the beginning. So, we're now to 4100. I would also like to add that, as a reminder, Jeremy's talking about how we don't fill positions when we don't have the enrollment, but we've also talked with this board about how we've absorbed other critical positions that aren't enrollment-based, such as instructional positions, such as, and, and the bigger thing is not adding things over the years that we've needed. We've still absorbed library positions, haven't added those back, but a big piece, I think, of this next levy is truly looking at, we are so behind on staffing for that goal, too. When we think about mental health, when we think about nursing, and those are not really things that are going to change based on where we hit on this 250. These are things we don't have for our kids today. So, I totally agree with you, and as we look out, as we always do, we will adjust that, and I hope to be able to come back and say, hey, we don't need this levy here, because something's changed with our funding from the state, or something's changed with our enrollment. But what we're talking about in the short term with that levy is really about funding to pay for things that we don't have today that we need for our kids, that we've discussed with this group, I think many of you feel passionate about, which is the services, those wraparound supports with mental health, nursing, other services that fall under that whole child that we're not able to provide. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out, because we're talking a lot about enrollment. We're, we're expecting enrollment to fluctuate with the pandemic, we think it's going to, based on what we're seeing so far, pick up going into next year, but if it doesn't, as Jeremy said, we won't add classroom teachers, but it's not just classroom teachers that are built into this forecast, it's other services that we don't currently have that we're very behind other districts. I just wanted to add that.
Well, I think, yeah, looking around the community, I mean, I know in my area where I live, it seems to be exploding a little bit, and I know that there's several other communities in the works now with some very zoning, you know? Yeah, so, I don't know, I mean, I think, where the numbers you, you were looking at, the average, did that include this past year?
No.
Okay.
It's not '21, it's 2017 to 2020. There were 1,056 building permits issued, which averages out to 253 for those four years, and we're under what was projected, so...
This is great, that's great news.
That is great news.
I wanna be under.
That is great news, but my point...
That means we don't have to pay money to hire more teachers, that's great news.
Right. My point is, if you convert that over and look at the Future Think report from 2018, we should have had 477 at 250 permits per year.
I'm following all that, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, if, if they don't come, then we won't need to spend that money. But we're talking more on this levy with, again, not classroom teachers based on growth, but services that our current kids don't have. So, I hear you, and I, I hope we are under, honestly. Like, that's great news for us, it stretches the current resources we have farther, because certainly we're not getting funding to equal every kid that moves in, we know that, so if we're under on our numbers, that, that's good news for us. But unfortunately, we're just sorely understaffed in other areas for our current students. So, that's, I, I'm just trying to pull it back, I'm hearing you. I agree with you, that's great, but it's really about, this levy is not about just maintaining and adding classroom teachers for growth, it's really more about, again, goal two, not goal one. So, goal one is academics and our teachers, and I think that's more relevant there. As Jeremy mentioned and Mark's talked about in the staffing, he, we're just trying to give you a big, long picture. Do I think any of these scenarios is gonna play out exactly with millage or timing? Probably not. But we just wanna say, looking at what could a picture look like, but we're really focused on this first green one, and what millage do we wanna look at? Because we cannot move forward with adding services and getting the mental health and nursing support and other services for our kids without additional funding. We're struggling in, in instructional coaches, so that isn't, we, we've cut all those and absorbed all those because we don't have funding. So, if we want those things to move forward and, and have a competitive school district that prepares our kids to compete with other high school students as they graduate, those are things that we need that are really not enrollment-based, or things we just don't have currently. Nobody's arguing with you on the enrollment. We agree with you.
I think, you know, when we look at those numbers that Mark has shared with us, just our, our number of nurses per student, and just where our district is, and knowing those kind of services that our kids need, and I mean, I agree, it's great if we're not hitting those enrollment targets, but, you know, I guess to just reiterate what Angie's point is saying, is that we have cut so many things and not added so many things that our kids need, and trying to figure out where that balance is of what will our community support, and what kind of value are we gonna offer to our kids, and what do they really need, by looking at some of these scenarios, and then figuring out, okay, in addition to that, we need to add classroom teachers maybe at some point, but there's things we need now that we're not able to offer our students.
Yeah, every time we see that we don't need to add a teacher that's built in, like, the three of us celebrate, because that's, that's, we're glad that we don't need to spend that money, because we know we have limited resources. So, again, it's, we'll add those classroom teachers when we need to for growth, but it's certainly not our goal to need to. Our goal is to provide other services that we're not providing at this point.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've fallen behind in other areas, and I, and I think, you know, getting further behind is, is only going to be more expensive down the road. And I think one thing that isn't necessarily said specifically, but I think we would probably all agree, is part of the reason this district has been able to do what they do, for example, with nursing staff at the level it is now, is because of the people in those roles. And I think we could all admit that part of the reason we're able to do that is because we have people in those roles who are committed to this community, who live in this community, who are willing to give above and beyond every single day. And you put a different person or different people in those roles, and they may not be willing to give that same level of service. And we can't just count on, we can't take advantage of the people that we have in this community who are willing to do that. We have to build up those resources in, in our school.
I appreciate that, Sheri. Anything else to add, too, is as we're opening additional buildings, and you think about nurses, for example, that you mentioned, now they're having to go to another elementary, they'll be going to another building once we get all the other ones transitioned, so it's, that's also another burden, time-wise.
So, if I'm understanding the timing of this, our January conversa, well, actually, probably November, December conversations on the vision moving forward, coupled with what that would mean in terms of potential staffing in the upcoming years, led us to a time where we needed to start looking at dollar amounts, which is what you've provided here. I'm going to have some questions relative to this, in the same manner that I did relative to TURF.
Sure.
But I don't mean to say obviously, I just mean, I'm stating that, so block out some time for me, if you don't mind.
Sure.
But in addition to that, then, sequencing, so this is the kind of outgrowth of the conversation that we've been having, not only since I've been here, but dedicated for a few months. What are you saying in this moment in terms of what the timing needs to look like moving forward? I see on pages two through five here that this has a fiscal year '22 opportunity for the collection of an 8.35 or a 7.9 mil one.
Yes.
What does that mean if we were to backwards plan from now?
That means that we would need to, in the next couple months, decide on...
When you say the next couple months, does that mean from now until August? Does that mean from now until April?
I believe it's May, I think it's May is when the filing deadline is, or when we would have to start the process, and then August is the, I can get the exact, I think we've sent it out before, and I can get the exact dates of when everything needs to be done. I believe it's beginning of August would be the filing deadline for a November election.
So, so, so walk me through that again, if it's beginning of August, does that mean they, they made a decision?
Uh, that would mean a, probably a June initial, decision between the group, and then possibly a, I think we only have one meeting in July, so generally, there are two resolutions that are being passed, so there would be a June resolution and probably a July resolution.
Thank you.
It would need to go to the auditor to set the millage, and that has to be determined 80 days before the filing deadline. The filing deadline for a November election would be somewhere the first week, either the third or fourth of, of August.
So, 80 days prior to that?
So, 80 days prior to that? I think it has to go to the auditor 80 days before you file it, 'cause it has to come back to the board after he sets the millage.
After he's certified.
Right.
August 4th, I just pulled up.
Thank you.
They've got me sent out, Jeremy.
So, it would be, what, June?
June would be, June would be our first resolution of the rate, and then it would...
Which is to send it to the auditor.
Correct, and that would be sent to the auditor for then, once that was gotten back, it would be a second resolution in July.
Thank you.
Our goal, to reiterate your point, is to get you this information, we're certainly not asking you to make a decision today, we know it's gone long here, but wanted you to have it, so we can continue this dialogue next week, answer any questions, so you have time to look over it. We're just trying to provide you with information, because if you do want to be on the ballot this fall, then obviously we're getting to a decision point soon, so just would like to open it up over the next few meetings for some more dialogue on that. And as always, if there's information that you need to help you with that conversation that we haven't provided, let us know, we'll be happy to get that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeremy, do you have anything else today?
I do not.
Thank you. Item number eight, board members' items of interest, just open it up in general. Do you have anything today?
I've got several, but we don't have the time.
Okay. Item nine, public participation. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not considered a public meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. Do you have anything today? Item 10, scheduling of the next board meeting. We will be back here next Thursday, March 18th, at 6:30. That'll also be streamed live on the district's website. Item 11, executive session. It is recommended the board enter executive session to consider the employment appointment of a public employee or official, to consider the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official licensee, or student, and to discuss details relative to the security arrangements...